Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the regular committee of the whole meeting of Wednesday, September 13th. We have already had a closed session. My name is Ian Morrison, Chair of the Committee of the Whole. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that the CVRD is on the unceded territories of the Kowachin, Malahat, Subacit, Halalt, Penelikat, Staminus, Liahson, Pakwachin, Ditidat, and Pachidat, where the peoples have walked gently for thousands of years. And we are reconvening from our closed session. I turn to Ms. Boyd, first item on our agenda.
Thank you, Chair. We're at the adoption of the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meeting of July 26, and the motion is that the minutes be adopted.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Chair. There's no business arising from the minutes, and public input period is next. The public input period is to offer the public an opportunity to comment on the agenda items before the committee considers them. The public input period procedure policy allows for an allotment of 15 minutes where the speaker is welcome to comment on any items on the agenda up to a maximum of three minutes. This excludes items that may, are, or have been subject to a public hearing. The speaker should comment in a polite, calm, and courteous manner, using respectful language, civility, and decorum. Thank you.
With that, I'd like to welcome anyone in the gallery who would like to provide input to the committee members today. Please come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. My name is Kim Bernard. I'm from Shawnee and Lake Area B, and I would like to speak to R1 on the agenda. That's the transit service item. And our family is a user of this system, especially with commuting to Victoria from Shawnee and Lake, and one of the recent changes has had a noticeable impact. And so that has been a shift in the very early morning bus time by an additional, I think, 20 minutes into the morning. And what we have found is that it adds another 15 minutes to the overall trip time each day. And I believe that the transit services provider should know this and factor that into their decision-making and cost estimation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your input. Would anyone else like to provide input to committee members today during our public input period? I see no one else coming forward, so Ms. Boyd, next item.
Thank you, Chair. We have delegations, and I believe we have Monica Patsey-Jones, the Executive Director of Couch and Missing and Murdered Women, Men, and Children Society, on the screen here in front of us.
Thank you. I believe everyone has a handout that was distributed just at the end of our, prior to the meeting starting, so you've got that to follow along. I don't believe we have a presentation, and welcome.
Thank you, and good morning. My name is Dale Kelly, and I'm a volunteer with Couch and Missing Murdered Women, Men, and Children. Thank you for taking the time today to listen, hear, and meet with us. We really appreciate it. We want to speak with you about our work supporting the families of the missing and murdered women, men, and children of Couchin, about our efforts in search and rescue, and our mission of education, advocacy, and prevention. Our founder, Monica Patsey-Jones, has been working tirelessly in this community, as well as advocating both provincially and federally, for over 30 years since her own sister was tragically murdered. She's been a voice for so many of those whose voice has been stolen. After many attempts of accessing provincial and federal funding with the help of professional grant writers, we have been dismayed at the lack of support for our work. Instead of chasing money at higher government levels, we've decided to come back to our community and focus on bringing local leadership together in a grassroots movement toward lasting change. It's my pleasure now to introduce you to Monica Patsey-Jones, as well as Troy Elliott. Monica Patsey-Jones is the Executive Director of the society, and Troy Elliott is the director. And they're going to talk to you about the upcoming gala event and plans for Couchin to host a national Missing Murdered Indigenous Women, Girls Two-Spirit Conference in 2024. Thank you.
Welcome, Monica.
Hello. My name is Monica. I started this because my sister was brutally murdered in 1977. She's a cold case unsolved. She is dearly missed by everybody. The RCMP say it's going to stay cold case unsolved because all the evidence deteriorated over the years. And we picked it up again when my grandnephew Desmond Peter went missing in the year of 2007. Ian Henry, 2015. Everett Jones, 2016. And we've had many murders here in Couchin. They're all unsolved with our indigenous people, going back to even the double homicide on Christmas Eve a few years ago. The RCMP haven't given our family updates, so we advocate for that also. I've gone up and down the island to all the chiefs and presented what you guys have in front of you, what we're doing. What we are doing is wanting to bring all the chiefs and all leaderships under one roof to be able to handle this situation because for the families, it's too much when we're trying to juggle everything around. To this day, I still search the rivers. I still search the mountains. We do it real strongly right now because the river is dry. We found bones in certain areas. We send it to the RCMP. Twice, we've had friends that come back to us and state that they wanted to know where we found the bones, so we showed them. So in that area, we're strongly searching, but we only have rakes and shovels. But what we need is those radar stuff to find bones or human remains. And there's just like a group of six of us ladies, ladies, that are doing this. We've requested search and rescue many times with no success. And I've gone to the National Inquiry presentation to Trudeau in 2019 in Gatineau. I witnessed that. I've gone to the parliament and spoken there a few times with ministers. When I went to Prince George, I went to the conference there, and we met with ministers there. But while I was at that conference, it's the same for all the families. There's no help out there for searching for their loved ones. And all their cases are also cold case unsolved. And I keep saying, people don't just disappear. I went to media quite a few times, and if you've got time, look up AP10 without a trace, and we're all on there about the ones that are here, missing and murdered in Couchin. That was a big step for us then when we did it. And I'm going to give Troy a minute to talk. Thank you.
Siem, siem siyala ch'at, siem salchuan, hi tsapka, hi tsapka. Maks ten nusqual'om and nusni'mok and nuslachen. We give thanks for today. Thank you for your time. We give respected friends, respected relatives, respected folks of our communities representing. Again, I can't thank you guys enough for giving us the time to speak here on behalf of the Missing and Murdered Indigenous Society, men, women, children. The impacts are far-reaching, not only for the individuals who have this happen to them, but the families, the children, the parents, the grandchildren, the aunts, the uncles. Far-reaching, the intrinsic site of examples that occur within individuals when something like this happens is far-reaching than what we could actually physically see, the impacts, mentally, physically, spiritually. So what Monica is working towards and what she's worked tirelessly for, towards, is the advocacy for everyone, the missing. Again, not only the missing and the murdered, but also the children, the families, the ones impacted, the communities. So when a murder happens, like what we're dealing with right now in the court system, it doesn't just impact each individual family, individual family. It impacts the whole community. We're a tight-knit community at Couchin Tribes here with roughly 5,000 members, and that tight-knit community doesn't only impact the person who's on the stand or the person who's testifying it. In this example of a murder, it impacts everybody. But getting back on track with this gala that's proposed here is seeking support and funding at a community level will take place at Mueller Hall in the next month. I believe there's about $16,000 already committed, and we're looking to reach approximately $25,000 to assure that there is a table to be served with $100 plates where everybody can come in and support the gala. Also, seeking donated items to have a silent auction type of thing. So it's a fundraising event that Monica's gearing up towards to host, to create funds to be able to host this conference she talks about. So the long-term goal is that the following year, she's fundraising to create a conference for missing and murdered indigenous. The purpose of the conference would be to bring everyone together, bring everyone to the same table, create these... With the commission's report, it's still a gray area. They haven't quite figured out how to navigate with this new report that came from Ottawa to say there's funding, there's sources available, but there's still not quite a road built to those avenues to get to those opportunities, not only for search, for help, but also the extended help within the communities of the impacted peoples within that community. Like I said, the children, the grandparents, the mothers, the aunts, the uncles, people who suffer at home in silence and don't know how to say, how do I get help, or what helps are available. So creating programs, creating awareness, creating opportunities like this is essentially the federal government has said, here's their findings, but we still haven't built a road to be able to get to that report and to be able to complete some of those actions and recommendations within that report. So the long-term goal and the work that Monica is doing is looking to bring a lot of these folks to the table, people who've been doing this over time, the community members, the RCMP, the societies, the WAVA, all these different groups who've been dealing with the fallout of these types of activities when they occur within our communities. So the shelters, also to create more opportunity to be able to acquire those resources from federal and provincial levels. Like they said, they have exhausted opportunities at those levels, and now she's turned to the local level to seek the support. So the ultimate support is request for contributions towards the table in any gala items, which is in the package you guys received. So again, thank you for your time. Thank you for hearing us out, and look forward to any support or any response that may be. Again, Couchin Tribes has contributed a bit. Some of the other local governments has contributed to acquiring the hall for us, and so now we come to this table and seek support and opportunity that maybe assist the society in creating this dinner to fundraise for a conference, the long-term goal.
Thank you, Troy. So we've got the Miller Hall covered. It was $5,565. Couchin Tribes is going to match that, and we're seeking funding for everything. As everybody knows, this is quite a big event, and we've got a lot of leadership coming forward. I did pass out the same package to all the chiefs on Vancouver Island, and we're in the midst of nominations and voting new chiefs in, so I have to, you know, go back again. I hand-delivered it to every one of them. And that's what we're seeking is for help from everyone here to assist us in this area, to partnership with us, sponsor us, whatever you can do to help us. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and sharing and speaking with us today, just so that you understand a little bit of how our format works. I don't have a package in front of me, but my understanding is your ask is not only that you've made verbally, but would be in the package. We don't consider vote on funding requests the day that a delegation comes to us, so we can take this back and have staff review your ask for support. But prior to us moving forward, I would ask if there's any of the committee have any questions that they'd like to pose to you, either in regards to your work, important work, or your event that you have coming up. So I turn to committee. Is there any questions for our delegation? Director Segal.
Can I just say one, just explain what's in the package in front of you quickly?
Sure, go ahead.
So there's the letter that we, it's basically a template letter that we use when we meet with potential supporters. There is a copy of our budget for the event. There is a project plan and a list of sponsors that we plan to meet with or have met with. And there is also a gala poster. My apologies for the black and white. That's what I have at home, black and white printer, so normally these would be done in color. The poster, if everyone takes note of the poster, there is a little QR code on there. You just scan that, and it takes you to the Eventbrite page. The name of the, the theme of the gala is lifting spirits honoring lives. So the site is live, but we haven't started promoting it yet because we want to have at least $25,000 raised before we actually start selling tickets.
Thank you for that. Director Segal.
Thank you, Chair. Not much of a question, but a comment. Thank you so much for coming and sharing your story. I know that that is not easy, and it's a, and yet, it's an expectation for that you're helping to educate our community. So I want to recognize how hard that is and that you've been doing this since the 70s, and I applaud you for your strength still here. I'm excited to come to the event, and I would be more than happy to offer a grant and aid. You can just email me, and we can set that up. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Wilson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Segal kind of preempted me there because I've got some money in grant and aid as well. Send me an email, and I'll see what I can transfer over to you.
Director Toprowski.
Thank you, Chair. And also, Sierra Acton has her hand raised just to let you know. Thank you. Thank you, Monica, and thank you, Troy and Dale, for coming here and speaking to us. I know you would have came to North Couchin too, but I know you've been really busy. It would be really nice for you to come and present to us as well in our future meeting, if that's possible. So yeah, as she had mentioned in her letter, North Couchin donated the cost for the full Mueller Hall when she sent in her request. I just wanted to ask if you could share the poster, send the poster to us, to CVRD, so we can share it widely, once you're ready to sell tickets, because all of us have, we have different connections, so just wanting to help and support you that way. I noticed I'm a volunteer in there, and I do accept. I noticed I was in there, so I do accept. No, I do accept.
They were going to ask you to do. I was going to say.
Yeah, so I've known Monica for a very, very long time. I won't get into what our nicknames are, but anyways, we have nicknames for each other. But I just wanted to share with everybody the volunteers that she has standing beside her, tireless hours of dedication to doing the work that, you know, standing along search and rescue when someone goes missing, when there's horrible, you know, horrible events that happen. They're tirelessly out there, and when she gets the word out on Facebook, people show up in the form of bringing food to like Kwamachin when that fellow went missing in the river, sending out people from, you know, people coming from Sanich all over the place just to come and help search. And these volunteers travel and on their own dime. Also, you know, she spoke about going and presenting on behalf of the murdered and missing for the Couchin here, traveling to Ottawa and other places, and sometimes this is totally on their own dime. They have to raise the money before they go. And there is, you know, someone might step up and pay for accommodations, but that's it to her, or, you know, they're, but that's very rare that I've heard. So I just wanted to say the conference that she's planning to host is a part of, can be a beginning of a roadmap for how everyone can be a part of this to help in our own ways and whatnot. So I just wanted to share that, and yes, and it's a really, a really hard thing to dive into when you start thinking about it, how many people that go missing every day, and we go on with our lives, and we don't, you know, like, I'm feeling embarrassed because I don't know the names of everyone right now because I'm so emotional, but I'm just sharing that we do have unsolved cases here still in Couchin, and there's only so much the police can do. But also, as Monica had mentioned, she'd gone to Trudeau, and they're trying to, along with herself and other people that are all across Canada, want to have something put in place to help them through this, because there isn't anything really set up for supports for this and continued. One of our elders in our community that was our whole commitment teacher, her son went missing. He's still missing today, Everett Jones. And he was my schoolmate, you know, like at school. We went to school together, and it's horrible not having answers. And so I just wanted to share that. Hi tsapka.
Director Acton.
I just wanted to say thanks for coming today, and I had the same comment as Director Segal and Director Wilson, that we do have a grant and aid, so please share your information, your nonprofit information and number, and please leave an extra package, and I will get it next Wednesday. And yeah, that you're doing good work, and I know that the community of Shawnee and Lake would want to support you, so please send that information forward.
Director McOnigle.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I was enthralled at your passion for the subject. I have a question through you, if I may. If there are organizations within the community that would wish to contribute to this who are watching online, how would they be able to reach out to you? Would there be an email address or something that they could contact you with?
There is an email attached to the documents on what we gave to you, and we do have, I do have email, and it's comyicanqueen1@gmail.com. And I believe my information's on the letter, and we do have documents.
Great. I'll share that within my community for anyone who may be interested to contribute.
So with that, I see no other hands. I just turn to staff. Do we need a resolution to bring back information and a report to assist in the funding for this? How would we best proceed with that? Yes? Okay, so we've just volunteered our CEO to follow up directly. Could we have a motion to have staff prepare a report moved and seconded? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? The motion carries. Monica, Troy, thank you very much for coming, and your team, it's very much appreciated. We're all aware of this, but your passion and sincerity in which you come forward and share with us is very much appreciated by all of us around the table and our organization. So with that, thank you very much, and let's give her a round of applause.
Thank you.
Ms. Boyd.
We have no correspondence, no information. Moving to reports, R1, report from the Facilities and Transit Division regarding the proposed three-year transit expansion plan.
Ms. Rondo, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Rochelle Rondo. I'm the Transit Analyst with CVRD, and with me in attendance today is Seth Wright, Senior Manager, Government Relations at BC Transit. The manager of Facilities and Transit for CVRD is away today, so Seth and I are here presenting on his behalf, and we're happy to answer any questions. For the new directors who joined the CVRD Board last fall, this is an annual report we present seeking board approval. The three-year transit expansion plan outlines what BC Transit and CVRD Transit staff are recommending in terms of service improvements over the next three years. If the budget was not an issue, we would love to provide service improvements to each area. However, this is not feasible, so what we've presented are immediate priorities based on recently approved plans, destinations, and public input. The purpose of presenting the three-year transit expansion plan is to seek committee and board approval for the first year transit expansion hours and costs, and if approved, these will be incorporated into the 2024 budget. The costs for the second and third year will be included as placeholders in the CVRD's five-year financial plan. In the case of the first year, we're seeking approval primarily for conventional and custom items that were already approved in previous years and budgeted for, however, they haven't been implemented due to a lack of provincial funding. The first year also includes an additional 400 hours to be allocated to the South Couchin area, which will implement the recommendations from the South Couchin Local Area Transit Plan that we expect to present next month. For the interregional service, following the one-year service review of the Nanaimo Couchin Express, we're proposing an additional 500 hours, which would be provided to expand evening service on Fridays and Saturdays. You'll see years two and three are what we're currently proposing. However, these will be reviewed again next year, and if approved, then those costs would be reviewed and included in the 2025 budget. BC Transit is asking for endorsement of this plan by September 30th so that our request can be taken into consideration and presented for provincial funding next fiscal year. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rondo, and just as sort of setting the table for this very well-written report, clear to my understanding, and this is not necessarily a formality, but an important part of the process to ensure that even though the fiscal reality is things are tight, we're trying to make improvements where we can. I think you've done a good job of packaging this for us. In regards to questions, I've got Director Stone and Director Wilson. Director Stone, please proceed.
Thank you. No real question regarding the report.
Thank you. Um, no real question regarding the, the report of the plan. I, I would support, um, the recommendation. Um, any, any, um, indications and conversations with the province of getting the financial support? I think we're on a four-year, feels like, is it four years of no additional funding for expansion priorities or, or adjustments to the system? And it's really frustrating because the messaging from the province seems to support public transportation and greener transportation options and social equity. But when it comes to the important requests from regional districts, they consistently go unfunded. So is there any indication from the province that they might actually step up to the plan, uh, in the coming fiscal?
I see Seth stepping up to the lecture. And so what do you got for us, Seth?
Yeah, respectfully through the chair, to answer this question, I would, I would provide a few general comments. I can't presuppose what the province is going to do and what, what financial decisions they would make. I'd say, every year, we go to the province with a conversation and, and say, these are the, these are the asks we've received from local governments across, across the province. Before the last few years, we did have several years where we received 100% of the ask of local governments. Um, in the last few years, through the pandemic, the money was being funneled more towards capital projects and a lot of programs that we have at BC Transit. So we weren't, uh, absent of receiving funding, but we did, uh, did not receive expansion funding. The, the most recent conversation that we had last year around expansion funding, the conversation was, you haven't recovered adequately from the pandemic to 100% pre-pandemic ridership levels to be able to say transit's a real, real priority for expansion and building, uh, new routes and, and new service to new areas. That conversation has shifted in the last six months as we've seen rider, pre, pre-pandemic ridership now being exceeded. So we're doing better than we were before the pandemic with ridership generally across the province and, and in Couchin Valley included. Uh, so we're excited about that. And that has shifted the, the tone of the conversation with the province. Uh, we're hopeful that there will be funding, uh, and expect that there's, that there's greater opportunity for funding than there has been in previous years. I would additionally note, however, that we're struggling with vehicle availability. And right now, uh, anyone that's tried to buy a vehicle in recent months or last couple of years might be aware that it's very difficult to acquire vehicles. So the timeline on ordering buses has expanded from one year to two years and sometimes further. And there's still variability within that. So we've had to order buses for our expansion next year about a year ago. And those buses are in the, in the manufacturing process right now. And we expect to get them in time for expansion, January 2025. Um, so there is limited availability of buses. And because we haven't had expansion across the province for a couple of years, we have all this accumulated demand from every local government across the province where we have transit service. So there's a lot more variables in the air, air, right now. We have a multiple account evaluation process. That process really favors ridership and so looks at ridership routes. But we're looking at, uh, how we can fairly distribute the, the provincial resources that are allocated. And there's conversations about how we can look for more ambitious growth or look at future years to ensure that, uh, that expansions are distributed to all communities across the province.
Follow-up Director Stone?
That was too good. Um, my follow-up is, is moot. So I would like to move the recommendation.
Recommendation's been moved and seconded. And, and thank you for doing that. And just noting the time that we probably will want to have a break for lunch today. So I have a speaker's list. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. I will go to Directors Wilson, Mannhouse, and McLintock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thanks Seth. Thanks Rochelle. That's good stuff. Going back to public input there, an interesting point that was brought up with the change in the schedule from Seanigan Lake, I think it was, that's it, added 15 minutes to that, uh, to that in-going trip there. I know it's unavoidable that you may be, is that the kind of thing that can be repaired or addressed at this time? Or is it set in stone now? It does, I mean, 15 minutes getting into Victoria is quite substantial if there-
Yeah, indeed. And again, through the chair, uh, as part of this September service change, and I believe, uh, Rochelle presented some information, uh, about a month ago when I presented the same meeting, I presented some rightsizing information to the Committee of the Whole Year. Um, and part of that reallocation of service was looking at all the runtimes based on, uh, accumulated data, based on what our automatic vehicle locators, sorry, I'm going to get a little bit technical, say about what our rider, ride times are in the last year. And so our scheduler made some adjustments and said, let's keep the arrival time at the legislature the same. What we neglected to notice is that that pushes the time quite a bit further into the morning rush hour. And so now if we want to correct this, the next time for us logically to correct this, because it takes about six months to enact a service change, to get the riders guide together and to do all the work required. So we're looking at a, at a April service change to do some other things in the system to enact a detour here in Duncan. So with that service change, uh, we'll do some further research on what's happening with Seanigan and, uh, and adjust that time to make more sense for folks.
Director Mannhouse?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, uh, my question's to Seth. You probably anticipate my question. How, how close is the Nanaimo Regional District to getting service to the Duke Point area
Thank you, uh, for this question, uh, as always. Um, the, this remains, uh, in year three of their transit redevelopment strategy, of the RDN's transit redevelopment strategy, which is sort of their version of a transit future action plan. Uh, the RDN is certainly ambitious in their pursuit of transit and has been a vocal advocate for, for expansion funding, including at forums such as UBCM. So, so I'm hopeful that they can move forward quickly with that. They will be entertaining their TIPS expansion MOU at the end of the month, uh, in their, it, it's contained in their year three. So, so I'm hopeful that, that that can happen. And that would place it around 2026, 27.
So that means when we're all at UBCM next week, that, uh, we run into anyone in the provincial government that we can advocate on the fact of how important that particular service is. And maybe the RDN will pick up on, uh, some funding sent their way. So it's, it's a good, good proposal. Director Nicholson, followed by McLintock.
Thank you. Um, I probably should know this, but what percentage of the budget are, is made up of fares? And then what is the trade-off between keeping fares reasonable and expansion?
Thank you. And through the chair to Director Nichols. Um, the, I would have to look at, we do an annual report that we've shared with staff called the Annual Performance Summary. And so I can look at that report. And it provides, uh, the ratio of fares to, as a portion of total operating costs. And so that would be that number. So we can, we can get that information to the Committee of the Whole, uh, through staff. Um, to the second point, I would say that we've worked with staff to identify a fare review process. We've effectively received local transit fund for the last couple of years. As part of that allocation of and distribution of nearly $100 million from the province to support the loss in revenue, uh, caused by reduced ridership during the pandemic, uh, the province said, please don't increase fares during this time because transit is a critical, important service. And we don't want to discourage people from riding the bus, uh, when there's other factors. And we want to ensure that transit service remains consistent and reliable through the pandemic. Uh, that stipulation wa- is in place and in effect until, uh, March 2025. So in anticipation and preparation for March 2025, we're kickstarting our fare review process again this fall. Couchin Valley staff, uh, your staff have been diligent in saying, can we put our hand up and, and be part of a fare review early in that process? So in, uh, four to six months' time, I would say we'll be coming to you to, to say, what are your priorities for a fare review? Is it, is it a, based on a cost recovery basis? Are there fare products you'd like to entertain for, uh, for supporting marginalized populations? Are there other types of priorities in looking at a fare review that you want us to look at? Uh, and our fare review team will be able to undertake that process. That process will probably take about six months and then come back to you with some recommendations on, on how you do some fare changes.
Thank you for that, Seth. And just remind the, the next speakers, the, the, the resolution on the floor is about the transit expansion plan, uh, the resolution. So if we can sort of stick to that as best we can. I've got Directors McLintock, Justice, and Acton. Director McLintock?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to, um, Seth. Um, just on, on this, in the first paragraph on page three, there's, um, 400 hours for Route 34 between Shemena and Ladysmith. Does that capture Area G? I'm just curious about what, like, I'm assuming it doesn't because I, I asked to be included in, I think it was called a feasibility study. Just wondering if you could elaborate on any information around what that might look like if we were to move forward.
Yeah, I might ask for Rochelle to speak to this one as well. But I would say at this point, that doesn't include Electoral Area G. Um, Electoral Area G needs to establish a bylaw for transit service, uh, before we can look at introducing service to that area.
Thank you for clarification.
I'll, I'll just add a little bit in regards to that. So adding service to Saltair was identified as a priority in the Transit Future Action Plan. We haven't, um, and we did test a possible route. So a possible route was identified there. It's not associated with these Route 34, these new hours. And we haven't re-initiated discussion with the board or the committee in regards to adding Saltair to the transit function. So we would have to have a more targeted conversation about that. Um, that would look at service levels and funding and, um, partnership. Thanks.
I think the director for the area is quite excited about this, isn't he? Director Justice and Acton to close. Director Justice?
Yeah, thank you. Um, a similar question, I guess, with respect to the additional 500 hours that are proposed as a placeholder for expanding NCX. Um, there's an indication that additional destinations will be considered in year three. I guess that refers to Duke Point. But is there some, if I understood your answer to Counselor Director Mannhouse correctly. Um, but at any rate, is there, will, will there be in year three some, a look at Shemena stop?
Certainly, uh, through the chair to Director Justice. Um, we have been having conversations with the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure about the possibility of installing, uh, a safe bus stop on the highway because the speeds are, are highway speeds. We need to have suitable area for the bus to decelerate and accelerate safely and, and have a safe area to pull out. That's sort of been the conversation. We expect that in about two or three years, when they do some intersection redesign of Henry Road and River Road, that there would be the opportunity. That's sort of what they've indicated to us at this point tentatively. Um, furthermore, there's sort of preliminary conversations we've heard from the RDN, that there's interest from the Sumi Nation. And they've reached out to staff, uh, here at the CVRD to explore the possibility of adding another stop at Oyster Bay. So these are conversations that are underway. The hope, um, from our planning team is that we'd be able to do a bit of a planning report on the NCX in, uh, a year and a half to two years from now and look at what the, what the appropriate stops would be based on ridership and based on, on how much time it'll add to the route because we want to maintain it as an express route. Uh, but we do want to continue to build that service and ensure that it has good ridership and, and provides good access to communities.
Thank you.
Director Acton to close. Director Acton? Yes, she can go for lunch. Well, it looks like Director Acton is MIA at this point. We do have a resolution on the floor. Uh, we'll talk, no, I don't think I'll talk really slowly to delay this any further. Any further discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? None opposed? We will ask Director Acton to reach out to you directly, uh, for, uh, any further questions. And thank you very much for your attendance today, Seth. A pleasure as always. Thank you, Rochelle.
Thank you.
Ms. Boyd?
Thank you, Chair. We are on R2, Report from the Legislative Services Division regarding the convert, converting regional district continued service to a service establishment bylaw. This is mine, first one. So, uh, in, back in April of 1970, the CVRD was provided supplementary letters patent, uh, granting the regional district service to regulate fireworks, firecrackers, firearms, excluding the city of Duncan and North Couchin. On June 10th, the CVRD adopted the Couchin Valley Regional District Bylaw Number 39. And this is the regulation of fireworks sale and discharge, excluding Duncan and North Couchin. So, and to note, we do not, uh, regulate firearms. That is public safety candidate's job. In 89, regional districts were authorized to adopt a service, service establishing bylaws. This would convert your supplementary letters patent into the service establishment bylaw, therefore making it a little easier for participants to come and go. Uh, just recently, um, we, I reached out to the Township of Ladysmith as well as Lake Couchin because they are only, the only municipal members in the supplementary letters patent. All electoral areas are. They have, um, both sent in, um, certified council resolutions to be excluded from this bylaw. However, uh, during, it is a board service establishment and therefore each board member will receive one vote. However, also, uh, to get the ministry's approval, we will require in writing consent from the current directors in the service establishment with, um, the supplementary letters patent. In the report, it outlines the steps and processes. And I would recommend that, back to the recommendation, that the CVRD, that to be recommended up to the board for today, that the CVRD board give three readings to CVRD Bylaw Number 4509. It's the Fireworks Regulation Service Establishment Bylaw 2023. And then after provincial review and statutory approval of the inspector, it'll be brought back to the board for adoption. Also, at that time, I believe we are in the works right now to also present a regulation bylaw at the same time. And, uh, electoral areas directors, if it passes the first bylaw, they will get a chance to, uh, look at the second bylaw for the regulation portion. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody read the report? It's clear? Do are opting out? The rest of us will be electoral areas. Everybody's got the piece of paper that, uh, was distributed to you, I hope. Could we have a resolution moved by Director Stone, seconded by Director Nicholson? Any questions, discussions, thoughts? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Director McConigal?
I know, I know. I seldom talk, but, uh, when I do, it's worth listening to.
Says you.
So this cleans up, uh, a problematic situation for the town of Lake Couchin, who was not only incorporated into the CVRD bylaw, but also had our own bylaw established in 2005. So there was some conflicting, uh, regulations between the two of them. So this will clean this up for the town of Lake Couchin. Um, we had previously requested, perhaps being removed from this. And I have signed the letter pertaining to that as it was a council resolution to continue with our current bylaw. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none opposed, the motion carries. Sign your paper, get them in. Ms. Boyd?
Thank you, Chair. We're on R3, Report from the Manager Couchin Community Center Division regarding the License of Use Agreement, Couchin Community Center.
Mr. Elzinga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the manager of the Couchin Community Center sends his regrets for today. So I'm, uh, just presenting the report as written and, uh, available for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Elzinga? Recommendation's been moved and seconded. Could you read the recommendation, please?
Thank you. That it be recommended to the board on September 13th, 2023, that the CVRD enter into a five-year lease of use agreement with Exim Food, Inc., for concession services at the Couchin Community Center effective September 15th, 2023 to September 14th, 2028.
Resolutions on the floor. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Elzinga. Ms. Boyd?
Thank you, Chair. R4, Report from the Parks and Trails Division regarding the Couchin Valley Regional Parks and Trails Master Plan Update.
Good morning. My name's Megan Walker, Parks and Trails Planner. Uh, the report before you provides an overview on the process for view, review and update of the Regional Parks and Trails Master Plan, which is a key action in the 2020-2022 Corporate Strategic Plan. The report also discusses the option of establishing a project citizen advisory group similar to the process the board provided for, for the current Regional Parks and Trails Master Plan. The Regional Parks and Trails Master Plan Advisory Group would consist of board-appointed members of the public representing a cross-section of interests and perspectives in regional parks and trails. The advisory group would act as a sounding board- The advisory group would act as a sounding board for the planning process and the plan and provide input to the consultants, staff, and the board. A draft terms of reference for the advisory group has been provided as an attachment to the staff report. If the board wishes to establish a project advisory group, the staff report also provides a recommendation to be advanced to the board. And we are available for any questions you may have.
Director Douglas.
Yes, Chair, I'd like to move the recommendation. If there's a secondary, I'd like to offer comment as well.
Got a second over there. We've got, go ahead, and I've got Director Justice after you. So it's been moved and seconded, it's on the floor. Please proceed.
Great, yeah, so the comment is not with regards to the advisory group specifically, but to the update more broadly, is that we are working on a biodiversity protection policy at municipality North Cowichin. We're partway done, and we are looking, mapping out sensitive ecological areas, potential wildlife habitat quarters, which to protect those could obviously involve park acquisitions. What I wanted to just suggest to CVRD staff was that our two organizations work together to make sure that these two projects are coordinated wherever that would be appropriate.
Great, thank you for that. I've got Director Justice, Martman, Acton, and Nicholson.
Yeah, thank you. I'm in favor of the advisory group. I noticed that the recommended resolution though doesn't include acceptance of the advisory terms of reference, and I'm wondering whether we'll get a chance to consider those further, and I guess, as we, you know, the federal and provincial governments are also very focused on protecting and enhancing biodiversity and achieving 30% of land protection. And as part of that, they're looking to develop new mechanisms and new funding to support protection of habitats that aren't necessarily oriented to parks. And I'm wondering whether we should get some wording into the membership qualifications with respect to that new balance between recreational and conservation use of conservation lands, and whether specifically we should have wording in there related to expertise in biodiversity protection and climate change.
Through the Chair to Director Justice. That sounds reasonable to me. Is there any further comments? Make the motion.
No, hang on, hang on, we've got speakers. I think we'll follow up with a subsequent resolution to this, so just bear with me. I've got next Directors, Martman, then Acton.
Thank you. I have two questions. The first one is around the use of the current electoral area, parks area advisory commissions, and whether there's some thought about how to incorporate them into this in terms of the advisory group.
Megan?
Through the Chair to Director Martman. We've certainly talked about that. I think for sure we could reach out to the parks to, as part of the recruitment process for the advisory group.
Yeah, I guess from, just speaking from electoral area perspective and area H, is that, you know, those people have vested knowledge of our parks, but also I think of sort of the future of where parks should lead to, and I think that would be valuable information. Second question I have is really around the reference to the strategic plan and wanting to make sure on sort of a go-forward basis that it ties into the, you know, I guess the draft or the upcoming strategic plan. And so do you see some way of, you know, making sure those things align? I know it's a bit of a transition period. Thoughts on that?
Through the Chair to Director Martman. I'm not sure exactly what the process would be, but that certainly sounds reasonable. It will be a year-plus-long process to develop this plan, so we'll certainly be looking to the upcoming strategic plan to ensure that we're achieving the goals in that strategic plan as well.
I know our staff are really good at aligning to our strategic plan, so no worries on that front.
We like that a lot.
Director Acton.
Thank you. I also have a question about the Parks Commission, but first, I'm trying to understand how detailed you're trying to get this report to be in the end.
Through the Chair to Director Acton. I think that the current Regional Parks and Trails Master Plan is a good guide. This is, this project is really to update that plan, so the level of policy detail that's in that plan is what we're targeting to update.
Do you have a follow-up?
Well, I just thought, yeah, so my follow-up is depending on how detailed you want each community to be, I think the Parks Commission has the greatest intimate knowledge with the area. So I hope that we will use them to the fullest and almost at first, and then provide that information to the consultants so that they can collate it all.
Just looking over at Mr. Farquhar, we, these will be board appointments, correct?
Yes, Chair, sorry.
The appointments to the advisory committee will be board appointments, correct?
These will be board appointments, and for clarity, back to Director Acton, this is our Regional Parks and Trails Master Plan. We have five community parks and trails master plans right now, electoral areas A through E. We also have our municipalities, so we also have this regional plan factoring in and accounting for residents across the entire region, not even the nine electoral areas and the four municipalities. So it's really at a higher level in terms of looking strategically how our current regional parks plan, our current regional parks program aligns with what we're doing in the electoral areas, but also aligns with what we're doing, our municipalities are doing in terms of their recreation programs and their parks programs in the municipalities. So there will be that dialogue, there will be that interface, but this is really focused on continuation of the Regional Parks and Trails Master Plan, which is operating at a bit of a higher level out of the context of what we have for the municipalities and electoral areas, and more of a community parks level plans that occur there. So this will be the, something will be important to engage, but all will be invited to provide input.
Thank you for the clarity. Does that conclude your remarks? Director Acton. Director Nicholson.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this is great, and I really appreciate the comments that Director Douglas and Director Professor Justice made about biodiversity and climate change and working together with North Cowichin and their initiatives. And so thinking about that, that a committee of seven to nine people, from my perspective, might be limiting as to what you'll have to address this time round, and I really think it's important to get solid representation from across the region for this with people who are knowledgeable about both the recreation side and the environmental side. So I would suggest you might want to expand the, I think you said seven to nine in the terms of reference, and I think maybe 12 to 13 might be more appropriate. Yes, because I think we've had extremely strong interest about our park, parkland acquisition fund and regional parks in general. So I think, I think that we'll have no problem finding good people to sit on it, and so, yeah, I think inclusivity is important. Thank you.
Director McGonigal to close.
Lots of pressure there, thank you. I'm interested in number three on the update on the parkland, regional parkland acquisition strategy, and focusing on successes from the past and perhaps failures in a regional approach, for instance. There were opportunities that may have been missed on some purchases that could have been set aside for biodiversity-sensitive areas, for instance, that were perhaps not endorsed entirely by this body. So I'd be interested, and we have been asking for the update of this for a considerable amount of time. That would be a focus on my point as to what the successes were within the purchases and maybe where we could have tried a little harder in some of those aspects. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. We have a resolution on the floor. Would you read the resolution, please?
Thank you. That it be recommended to the board that the Regional Parks and Trails Master Plan Advisory Group be established to advise consultants, staff, and the board on updating the Cowichin Valley Regional Parks and Trails Master Plan.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Are there any opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. Director Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move that we add wording to the advisory group membership qualifications that reflect generally a new balance between recreational and conservation interests and specifically related to biodiversity and climate change.
And, okay, normally we ask people to write something as complex as that out. Do you have it written out?
I do.
Can you make sure you get it to staff?
Yes, I can.
Is everybody clear on the motion that's been moved and seconded? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? None opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Director Justice. Ms. Boyd, next item.
R5, Report from the Economic Development Division Regarding Tourism Couch and Contribution Agreement 2023 to 2025.
Moved by Director Stone, seconded by Director Segal. Go ahead, Mr. O'Reardon.
Thank you. Just to introduce the report, so as you can see, this report is to seek approval to renew the contribution agreement for the delivery of regional tourism services by Tourism Couch and Society for 2023 to 2025. Would you like me to provide a little bit more details on the report, or is everyone comfortable with that?
I see a few nods, so you better give us the information.
Okay. So, yes, Tourism Couch and is delivering regional tourism services in the region since, on behalf of the CVRD since 2016, and prior to that, the function was in-house at Economic Development Couch and. So this renewed agreement seeks to support a collaborative working relationship between the CVRD and Tourism Couch and Society, as outlined in the report, and there's some specific changes to the report, which I'll just outline ones of note. So the removal of the municipal and regional district tax for administrative reasons, which we'll draft a separate agreement for that. Additional clarity on reporting, the purpose which would, to enable the CVRD board to review and provide feedback on any work plans for Tourism Couch and for the forthcoming year is built into that plan. Some supplemental language on the nature of the relationship between Tourism Couch and Society and the CVRD, including staff collaboration and alignment between the work of Tourism Couch and Society and the CVRD Corporate Strategic Plan, as well as the OCP documents. And then, maybe most importantly, the draft agreement also expands the mandate of Tourism Couch and Society to begin to take a leading role in tourism product development in collaboration with EDC staff. So the current agreement and the mandate for Tourism Couch and is primarily, are solely in the area of marketing. So the purpose of this would be to support a kind of that collaborative relationship with, particularly with Economic Development Couch and, but also municipalities around supporting the development of the tourism industry through tourism product development in line with the EDC sector development goals. And then Tourism Couch and has reviewed this and is comfortable with the terms as presented, so I'm just here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, I got a quick question for you here. And I don't recall this discussion, but we might have had it. What was the initiator of the transition away from a political liaison position to staff to staff? Do you recall how that came up?
I do not recall. I believe at the very outset in 2016, it was a staff appointment originally to Tourism Couch and, which we then amended to that initially being a non-voting member, and then in the most recent agreement, removal of appointed position to the Tourism Couch and Board in favor of the process that we're following now to the board to be able to provide feedback, and then a collaborative relationship between CVRD and municipal staff working with Tourism Couch and.
I may have a supplemental, but I'll go to the other speakers. Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Barry. Very quick one, first of all, straight yes or no, and then I've got another more complicated one. The MRDT, which is collected, will still go to tourism? It's not been funded?
Yeah, that was a discussion from finance that they just want to remove it for clarity. So we are working on that next.
Still funded back to them?
Yes, so that'll be, that'll come to the committee for...
The more difficult question, if I follow up, if I may. 120K, I see there's a sentence in the report which says is used as leverage to obtain funds from other areas, say, the so-called skin in the game there. Can you, do you know any figures on how much was actually leveraged, let's say, last year or the year before? Was there anything forthcoming with using those funds?
Yeah, so those funds would be directed from Destination BC, so that number is determined by them on a year-to-year basis. I don't have the exact figure in front of me, but in the region, 100, 200,000, yeah.
They have given some...
Yeah, they do.
Good, thank you very much.
Director Martman.
Thank you, and thank you for this report, and I'm hopefully not going to take this too sideways, so bear with me. And my question comes out to the linkage of this report and the 120,000 that will come for another report. And the question I ask comes out of listening to how other regional districts, or particularly Cortez, has diverted their MRDT money to housing, and whether or not, how this fits with our draft strategic plan and the need to balance housing, tourism, and all of that. So I'm going to, I don't know if putting it on the spot, or is this better discussion for a later report?
So I'm going to just interject here a little bit, because like, I think that's part of the specificity for the separation of the two. This is a core tourism attraction question, and you're going into the MRDT and linkages to strategic plan, so is that a fair assessment?
That is a fair assessment. I would maybe just add that our workforce housing strategy has baked into that engagement around that very question, which the board has requested that staff come back with. So there's a discussion, one around how should we potentially approach regulation of short-term vacation rentals, but also the question of where might we direct that funding? What's the appropriate use of it? So that should be coming back as part of the draft workforce housing strategy for the consideration.
And, thank you, and I guess, just from my perspective...
We're pretty sideways already, so you're not going any further? Okay, good.
I look forward to that discussion with the board. I think it's important.
As a point of information, Mr. Chair, we did have a discussion on this just a couple of months ago, and the direction that was received is followed up with a ministers meeting that we have next week regarding that very subject. So there was a fairly detailed discussion, I think it was in June. Thank you.
Ms. Boyd, I think that brings us to R6.
R6, Report from the GM of Community Services Department. Here he comes. Couch and Public Art Gallery Society Funding, and the recommendation is for direction.
Mr. Elzinga again. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this report presents potential options for support for the Cowichin Public Art Gallery Society. I have some additional information. I've been informed this week that the society has a verbal agreement for a display of Canadian masters, including some works from the Group of Seven. There is a verbal agreement on that display. The value of the works is in the neighborhood of $6 million. So that's the level of initiative that the Couch and Public Art Gallery Society is undertaking, and just want to introduce in the gallery today is Patrick Law, manager of Arts and Culture Division from the CVRD, and Jock Hildebrand from the Couch and Public Art Gallery Society. They're available for questions, as am I.
Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think one of the comments that was made, thank you, John, one of the comments that was made earlier on by the Chair, that Chair, that funds are very tight at the moment. And this is one of the things that I'm most concerned about, that there are, to my mind, other more stringent priorities right now. For an example, we had an earlier delegation asking for far less funds for the missing Indigenous community-seeking funds. That, to me, is, is something which, to me, is far more deserving of contributions from this body. And having said that, I, I'm not, and these are big numbers. These are huge numbers. Hundred and twenty-five thousand maybe, ten thousand maybe, hundred and thirty-five thousand maybe. I cannot support any of the options, as these are tough times. There are other priorities I think are far more deserving. Thank you.
I've got Directors Douglas, Acton, Justice now, so, okay, hang on. I'm just, and who else? Anybody else on the side? Got him, got him, got him. Okay. Director Douglas.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I know we're concerned about tax implications with the 2024 budget after coming out of a tough year, and likely another couple tough years as well with the new funding formula for regional recreation and other cost pressures. With this proposal, though, and the requests from the Couch and Public Art Gallery, what, what I find appealing about it is, first of all, the short-term and long-term economic benefits that, that we would see with a facility like this. Also, even though the, the request to cover part of the staffing costs on an ongoing basis, again, it, it is a big number, looking at some of the cost pressures that we're facing right now, but this is the, the norm in, in many other communities across BC with these sort of facilities, as Mr. Hildebrand has pointed out in his scan of, of communities across BC. And, you know, the thought that we could potentially leverage, use this hundred and, you know, twenty-five thousand dollar annual contribution to potentially leverage thirty-six million dollar facility, again, would be a, a big benefit to not just City Duncan, but the whole, the whole Couch and region, and many of our, our plans for development in the area in terms of densifying our core and in this area surrounding the CVRD office, and not only getting more housing in that area, but these, you know, attractive amenities, which this public art gallery would certainly meet that criteria. So, I don't, I don't have a motion, I'm ready to, that I crafted for the Board, but, again, despite concern about cost pressures, would, would be interested in, in looking at this a bit more closely.
Thank you, Director Douglas. And I've got a fairly exhausted list here, and, and keeping in mind, staff are looking for direction on this. So, I, I'd like you to make your comments with a view to the type of direction that we might get to in the form of a motion. We've seen presentations, I think we all have feelings about this. But if we could try and be succinct, I just want to review my list. I've got Directors Acton, Justice Toparoski, Manhouse, Stone, and myself. Does anyone else want to mention? Director Deck. Okay. Anyone else? Director Nicholson. I don't know. We'll keep going. Okay. And keep in mind, we do, I think somebody may want to have some lunch today, too. So, go to Director Acton, please.
Thank you so much. As a practicing artist, to an extent, I, I have to put my community hat on and look at this through the perspective of the community. We are set to go to the community and ask them for their input. So, to, to do anything ahead of time, I think, is telling our, telling people that we don't value their input, we're just going to make the decision without it. And, because this would be ongoing, and it sets us up to do it, even if the community is past, it's not within the community's wishes. And what I would like to see, though, when we do go to the community, that we're really clear on the question, do they want to support an art center to this degree, and do they, are they willing to pay for it? I think it has to be really clear, not just ambiguous, how sometimes things can be interpreted. So, that's my comment, and I would support just referring this to staff to include in the questionnaire.
Director Justice?
Thank you. Similar comments to Director Douglas. I'm very supportive of this art gallery plan. I think it's actually a really good investment, both in our arts and culture sector and in the tourism sector. I think there's a very good probability that this would become a significant economic driver for the entire region. So, I support doing what we can to move this ahead, at least to a point where we consider this expenditure against the overall budget. I'm, at this moment, unprepared to move one of the motions, but I would support either motion, option two or option three.
Director Toparoski.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not going to talk about the money or donations, because it's already been covered, but I'm glad to see that Stuart Pegadwan is part of the Directors, I guess it was, in there. The other thing I just wanted to speak to and bring to light was, under the risks of you have First Nations, and number three have lack communicate, community, muni buy-in, and in that bullet number three, you also mentioned it would be hard if First Nations didn't buy into this as well. And then in bullet number nine, I can see sometimes with my glasses on, the relationship building with Couch and Tribes you mentioned here, and just working, failure to develop a working relationship would threaten public support. It's really nice that you have Stuart there as well, because you can, you can count on bouncing some things off of him on what might work in forming that relationship at that artist level. And, because I, you know, I'm not speaking for, for Couch and Tribes, but I think it's, it's really hard for any organization, even CVRD, when people are coming to ask for funding all over the place. Couch and Tribes is also being asked to support and funding, support, it's sitting at tables. It, it's just spread really thin, I think, the, the resources. So, just, just wanting to share that as well, but forming that relationship will take time. Thank you. I'm keeping it short, Chair.
Director Manhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I totally support this, as my fellow counselors from North Couch and are totally supporting. This is great for the Couch and Valley, and it puts us up on the, on the world map. It's great for cultural and, and, and the economic development of the region. The funding will go a long way to getting provincial and federal support for this. Somebody mentioned leveraging on a prior thing, and I think this is great for leveraging future funds from senior levels of government. So, I'm totally supportive of this. I've been a champion of this, of this project since about a year now, Jock, or so, and a year and a half, so, and I totally support this.
Thank you, Director Stone.
Yes. Yeah, and I, and I've said before, I would love to see the arts councils of the region lined up behind this initiative. I still yet to see that show of support from the, from the other arts councils within the region. I'd echo some of the other comments on the other side of the issue that I've heard, like Director Wilson. I do question the regional nature of the benefit, whether it would benefit the core or the region as a whole. For an ask like this, I would expect to see the leadership of the other arts councils here with a show of support, if it is truly that regional initiative. So, I couldn't say that I would feel that level of support at this time, just concerning with budget issues.
I'm Director Stone. Can I ask everyone to keep their conversations quiet and pay attention to the speaker's voice?
And I'm sure our representative here is going to tell me that they have support from all the arts councils, but, yeah, that wasn't the indication that I received by text message, so.
Mr. Elzinga, would you assist us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through to Director Stone, that just want to mention that three support letters from arts councils are included in the package presented in front of you today, including one from Lady Smith.
And I will eat my words. Thank you.
Mr. Elzinga, I think we need you back up there again, and I don't know why, it seems to be a bit of a blur, and maybe I'm going to get caught with this information being within the report, too. But, so, process-wise, this organization has, in years gone by, had that kind of, the kind of dollars that we're talking about available as a regional grant aid amount that we had, and I think it was in Function 100. And previous boards have essentially whittled that down to not much more than an emergency fund. So, in, in moving forward, what, what are the specifics around alternative approval process, full-on referendum, like, is, you know, I, I can't see moving forward on this without public endorsement of, of a fairly substantial nature. So, can you give us, I'm sorry if it's in the report, but could you recap what the potential options would be if we were to go down that road to public consent?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try, and I may rely on Ms. Mohan or, or Ms. Bowen to help me out. So, because in the report, it suggests that in some of those funding options, it would come from the regional grant in aid, where we have some authority to do that. As you mentioned, my recollection is that in the past years, we've had up to six hundred thousand dollars in regional grant in aid, which was a fairly large amount that went to a number of different organizations, arts councils, Couch and Sportsplex, et cetera, at one time. So, we have the authority to do it as a regional grant in aid for the amount of dollars that are in the report. Of course, you see in one of the attachments, the 10-year spending plan for, for the Couch and Public Art Gallery, which has significantly higher amounts. And at that point, I think staff would be suggesting a public approval process of some kind. And obviously, there's numerous public approval processes, and they have their pros and cons, and some expense.
I guess from a timing perspective, then, if we were to be exploring, moving forward with an amount through Function 100 in that strategic priorities fund, we would be looking at a 2024 requisition increase in order to make those funds available?
I'm seeing nods from, from Finance over there, so yes, we are talking at 2024. The, the ask today is whether staff are going to include this in the draft budget process. So, this would be coming back for, before you at some point through the budget calendar.
Yeah, that was specifically my clarification, is it will be in that function, and it'll be a requisition increase in order to achieve it. Okay, thank you. I've got Directors Deck, Nicholson, and Staples. Director Deck.
My question's been answered. Thank you. I'll pass.
Okay, then Director Stap, uh, Nicholson.
Um, I think I'll pass right now. Thanks.
Director Staples.
I'd like to move option two, because it will be discussed and debated, the amount at budget. So, I would like to move option two as what we would hopefully work towards and have this discussion in budget.
We have it seconded. Option two has been moved and seconded. I'll go to Director Martin.
Thank you, and I would speak against this option. Specifically, the concerns I have are that when we go to budget, we're going to be facing, I think, some really significant decisions that are going to impact our core services. And I think this, it would just be leading staff to do more work on something that, at this time, this moment, is just not that, in my mind, feasible, and my community certainly is facing regional recreation increases this year and next year. Looks like curbside collection increases. To put something towards arts and culture is important, but I just don't see it raising, raising high enough. Thank you.
Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You've already heard me speak against all the options there, but one of the things that comes up here, again, is, some of the things I hear are, well, you know, overall, regionally, it's not very much. This is going back to a death by a thousand cuts. It's only this, it's only that, but the more you add it in, the more it comes to. And much as I would like at the moment to, to support the arts, and I, and I do, by the way, this is not the time. So, I won't be supporting option two or any of the options at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. So, through to staff, I'd just like some clarity on the whens and the hows. I'm anticipating we would be looking at this being a supplemental request. It would be, I'm assuming, Function 100. And at what stage are we going to be considering, I don't have the schedule in front of me, but Function 100, the core, and, and would this be coming at the same time as far as the supplementals? Would they be coming when we're discussing Function 100? Timing's kind of important in this.
So, I think I have the dates in my head, but look to Ms. Bowen for confirmation. So, my understanding is the draft budget will be presented to the Board on November the ninth, that on January the 11th, regional budgets will be presented, which may include Function 100, but looking for confirmation on that. Yeah, I had those dates correct. Special committee of the whole on January 11th.
Good one. He's been here a while. So, we've got no other hands up, and we've asked the question be called. Oh, Director Nicholson.
Thank you, Chair. May I ask a question about the arts and culture master plan?
You may ask a question, and then we will, we will go to calling the question after this.
What are you envisaging for this master plan? And how might it help us on the economic development benefits of this as an investment versus the arts and culture, making our community more attractive for people that live here, sort of thing?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through to Director Nicholson, and I would invite Patrick LeBon, if he has any additional comments to this, but there is a request for proposal for consulting services out right now, so those documents are available to the community to see. I just actually shared them with a user group of the Couch and Performing Arts Center this morning. The intent is the consulting will be done from November of this year through to November of next year. It's a fairly large process, a lot of public engagement, including numerous stakeholders, including arts councils, music societies, et cetera, to identify the preferred priorities for the region. So, the art gallery is obviously one of the priorities, but there's numerous other ones. So, there will be public consultation, stakeholder engagement, to develop an arts and culture master plan, which is anticipated for November of next year, which is mid-budget deliberations. There is the potential for recommendations to come out of that plan for the 2025 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Elzinga. Follow-up?
Just a quick follow-up. So, I guess what I'm wondering is, will we, will I do some assessment of the capacity, the community capacity and support for this specific project? And, yeah, will, will it get to that detail, or is it going to be sort of a higher level? Just people's wishes?
That's a tough question to answer, Mr. Chair, through to Director Nicholson. So, again, we're looking for stakeholders and public to present their priorities. So, we won't be initiating, but I'm sure that this particular project will be presented as part of the plan.
Okay, so everyone's clear what we're going to vote on right now. Could you read option two, please, for us?
Thank you. The option two requests staff to include a hundred and twenty-five thousand for staffing in the 2024 draft budget as a regional grant in aid.
Call the question. All those in favor? Those opposed? The motion fails. Director Nicholson, beat you to it.
I'd like to move option four.
Did I see a seconder? We've got seconder, so could I please have option four read?
Thank you. Advise the Couch and Public Art Gallery Society that the Board could not consider additional funding until the arts and cultural master plan recommendations come forward for the 2025 budget. 2025 budget.
Director Stone?
I just want to just note that the letters of support support the vision of the gallery. I do as well, but not the financial ask that was presented to us today. Thank you.
Everyone, Director Wilson?
Can I a question here? I'm just reading previously, and and I will be voting in, but I just need a little bit of clarity from perhaps Mr. Elzinga. There is in the analysis, this can also be viewed in the 10-year spending plan attachment B, noting that a larger investment may be requested in the future. Are there any numbers attached to that larger investment, Mr. Elzinga?
Go ahead. It's not, it doesn't pertain to the motion on the floor, but go ahead.
So, the budget amount for all funding sources in future years is significantly increased from this particular ask. I don't know of what the ask will be for from the Couchin Valley Regional District at that point.
Seeing no other hands, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. Ms. Boyd, next on the agenda.
We have no unfinished business and no new business. We move to question period, that the question period is an opportunity to offer the public to ask questions regarding a business of CVRD. Kim, are you going to? Is there anyone in the gallery? Do I need to read it?
No. Is there anyone who wants to provide or ask a question at the committee? Seeing none? Motion adjourned, I believe, is it not? Both seconded, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry. We are adjourned, and we are back here in 51 minutes. Lunch is in the usual room.